Hi, Joe. It's 5:30. We'll call the March 3rd City Council of Cresco, Iowa, meeting to order. Roll call.
Carmen?
Present.
Busca?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Tonight, we'll act on the consent agenda, which consists of approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from February 17th, 2025, approval of parade permit for St. Patrick's Day 5K fun run on March 15th, 2025, for portions of Third Avenue East, 8th Street East, York Street, 7th Street East, 8th Street East, 8th Avenue East, 8th Avenue West, 2nd Street West, 4th Avenue West, and North Elm, and approval of flag requests for 2025, which is St. Patrick's Day, March 13th through 17th, Crestwood High School graduation, May 16th through the 20th, Ridiculous Day, July 17th through 19th, Harvest Fest, August 21st through the 25th, Holiday Open House, November 20th through 24th, and Santa Parade, November 27th through 30th.
So moved.
Roll call.
Busca?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Basson?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Staff reports, Public Works.
February 19th, we had some safety training with the IMAU group. We did some chainsaw training with the electrical heat stress training. They'll be back again this month for some more training. February 20th, the police chief and I attended a safety action plan workshop over at the jail. It was presented through the county engineering department. Their, I believe, chief, was it every five years? It's one of those two, I think?
That is correct.
Yep, where they have to update it, talk about road safety accidents, things like that. I think he said, as a county, our accidents are lower than average, but the serious and the fatal accidents that are in Howard County are higher than the state average. So that's a little concerning. So they're going to come up with some ideas and get back to us, I believe. I did meet with Craig Wood from the state DOT. He was in town looking at the sites where we're going to put the signs up with the speeds on them. We drove around town and looked at a few other streets and intersections that we'll probably do some different signage with. We've had a couple water main breaks since our last meeting. One of them was on Stock Avenue on February 23rd. They found it about 10 o'clock at night. And the water department and MEMR's worked until about 9 o'clock Monday to get that one sealed up. We had another one last week over on 2nd Street East, just north of here. That puts us at six for the calendar year and a total of nine since October. So we're a little ahead of schedule on that or a little above average. And then February 26th, we had a public works meeting and the topic there was mostly yard waste, the yard waste site, and we're going to talk about that later in the agenda. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Item number two, please.
I'm ruling to have nothing that stood off from February from the report.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Administration.
Finished up the budget and getting it up to the Department of Management. Around the 15th of the month, the county will be sending out those tax notices like last year. They made a few changes with the hopes they'll be less confusing to residents. The library has some issues with their furnaces and they'll need to be replaced right away. So they'll be getting quotes for two new ones. There will be a meeting for the comp plan on March 11th and Champlin Hall. Postcards for the survey went out with the most recent bill, so please take time to fill it out. Hazard mitigation work session will be on March 12th. And then I also passed out some information on some legislative updates that will directly impact us. So just take the administrative.
Great. Thank you, Nikki. Committee updates.
The Howard County Economic Development Meeting met last week. The interesting part was there was a presentation by my broadband. Doesn't affect anybody in the city because their grant is to wire rural areas, which apparently we aren't rural enough. You have to be outside of the city. And the services they're bringing, it was very interesting hearing that. And of course, we've all read about the school project of 16.4 million. And it'll touch on an item we're looking at tonight. One of the housing, the Howard County Economic Development revolving loan fund for housing is now essentially used up, which sounds bad, but it's good because that means the money's out and working in the community. And then there's another one that is, we'll be talking about tonight, that's almost used up. So good going. Thanks.
Are there any others?
I had chamber meeting. Basically, just updating everybody on what's going to be going on this summer. The pub crawl will be for March 15th. The family fun nights in May, they're going to be at the Fitness Center. In July, the Nature Center, and August, National Night Out, and then the circus will be here again. And that's it.
All right. Any others?
No. I don't think I need to say much about the theater because they're all here. So we'll go with that shortly.
All right. At this time, I'd like to recognize three employees for their employee anniversary. TJ Casper with the Fitness Center of two years, Grant Depke with the Police Department for two years, Rita Herlichka with City Hall with one year. At this time, we'll ask from publics from the audience, her comments from the audience. This has nothing to do with the agenda. It would be anything that's not on the agenda. If you come up and choose to speak, we just ask that you state your name, your address, and what your comments may be. If there are none, we'll move on to new business. Item number one, Cresco Theater Commission to Discuss Scene Shop.
Good evening. Did you know why we're here? Asked for extension two weeks ago so we could actively look at some fundraising options for us on this scene shop building that we're looking at. In the last two weeks, we have landed a promissory note for $100,000, $100,000, $127,000, right there. $100,000 came from three individuals kind of combined for one. As we spoke before, we have numerous things set up that we want to do, and we're going to donate things from the Summer Musical. We have the talent show, or not a talent show, but we do show when we put on, you know, all this rough stuff. And it comes down to, like we've talked in our group, you know, we can't tell you how much we're going to make, almost. It's an impossible number to give you. You know, we're dictated by weather. So if a show's set for Saturday and we have storm come through and it doesn't happen, you know, that affects us. So all we can do as a commission is, as we do, as we did with the Marquee, you know, we go out, we continue to fundraise, we continue to push forward and get that money as we can. Would I like to have all the money before we start? Yeah, I would. But I just can't honestly sit here and say that we're going to have that. Proposed $615,000. On lines with that, spoke to a few other people tonight or today about this. When you get a commercial plan to look at, you get a very small window to look at those items. And not every single person or part of that project knows all aspects of that. I don't know building. I don't know steel. I know my aspect. Other people have to know theirs. You have a lot of lipstick on a pig here. We all see the Cresco Canet sign on the new addition they built. That's the lipstick on the pig. That sign does nothing to generate revenue for the high school. It doesn't bring any more people in there for high school. It doesn't help anybody do anything better for high school. It's literally, the pig's still there, you just add lipstick to it. This plan has a lot of lipstick on the pig, meaning there's a lot of things in this plan that, given the opportunity, I think we can trim and still have a very viable building, just different materials than what they expect. There's a lot of things that are disrespected. You don't see that until you still really start looking at it. So, yeah, I guess, unless you have any questions for me directly, that I could try to answer.
What type of lipstick you talking about?
There's a lot of things, there's a lot of things that they've added that, in my opinion, like giant fans to air that you don't need to spend $85,000. Heat coils in bathrooms, when you have a fully ducted heated system, that you don't need. So that only takes costs out of my, me having to put it in, and my equipment costs, you got electrical costs, you got labor costs. There's quality of some of the material that's probably high-end that we can go for mid-range, and it's not altering any of the integrity of the building. We don't need to have the high-end, super expensive things to do what we need to do. You know, there's a lot of different things we can look at.
I guess my question is, you all have been talking to Martin Gardner since 2020, and intensively during the last year, during 2024.
Yep.
Why weren't those things taken out of the plan that went to the kids?
Great questioning. I was not a part of this project to begin with, because as a theater commission president, I was asked not to be a part of it because they felt it was a conflict of interest. A year ago, the plans came across and we looked at this. They weren't finalized yet, and they were coming to me with an $850,000 bid proposed. There's no way I was going to walk in here with an $850,000 proposal. He would laugh me out the door. And I finally saw the plan for the first time and saw the things that we were trying to do. And I said, this is, in my opinion, not what the scene shop is meant for. So we kind of scrapped the idea and said, I want four walls, a slab, and a roof, and make it energy efficient and make it safe and follow the specs that we have to follow. So that took time for them to get that plan ready. I still think if we came in last year with that, it would still take them a lot of time to get there. So to answer that question, I didn't see that. So some of those things that, like the steel, I don't know steel. I can't tell you what grade they're putting in. They're telling me what they're putting is in lighter panel, this sort of steel. We're putting a standing steam, a standing seam roof. There's many different grades of standing seam roofs. When that bid then finally comes through, a few weeks ago, it's up to the people that look at that, which had a very small window to get those things all put together. And unfortunately, that's the commercial game. I don't like it. I don't like the commercial game. It really ties your hands to what you can do if you have a short, a short amount of time to do it. In a perfect world, you have people that are on your team that are all versed in what you're doing there to tear it apart and get out there your comparable at bits. Well, you can't always do that. We did some things with that. We found things in that we could change on the women. This is better, this is cheaper. Can we get this included in the bid? And that's what we did. So, but there's a lot of that stuff that we, others say, we're going to do this and this, but until it comes down to the nuts and bolts, and you see the numbers, you really don't know.
Just to clarify too, Dave, I mean, the 28th was the bid meeting, and the 11th was when the bids were open. Weren't they due on the 10th?
Yes.
So you had a very, just to emphasize the small window, because I'm assuming that you, you received your part of that bid package in a week? Is that fair to say?
Correct. Yes.
So you had a week to try to go through and dissect all of that?
Yeah, a week and a half to really get through it.
Okay.
And then they bring your fighter, your denims out like four days prior. So then you have all the denims you have to then take into consideration. You have to then on the fly figure that out and go to your sources. And it's more so the general contractors have more of a problem with that because they, they're overseeing everybody. It's just my part that I can deal with. So.
I think perhaps I didn't make myself clear. That is a short window, and I always feel for contractors. But my issue is, why wasn't all that discussed before it went to bid? And I see your, I understand that the commission told you they didn't want you involved. But I guess my question to the commission is, all of that should have been looked at and ironed out before the bids were sent out.
Sure. And you see from 2020, COVID hit.
Right. And that's why I said, most intensively in 24, I'm just having trouble with, with now saying, oh, well, those specs weren't what we wanted.
It's not the specs. It's the, the quality of the specs. It's the, you know, there's two by fours and there's studs and there's two by fours. I mean, there's metal studs, there's wooden studs. There's different variations of a lot of material that we can alter at a cheaper expense and still have integrity to build.
I'm sorry. When, when I built my house, I knew what kind of studs they were putting in it. And I just have a real problem.
Sure.
So Dave, if I'm reading this right, from the two weeks ago where you wanted, was it 389 or something like that? Now it's down to 225 with the investments you got of, you know, $127,000 and $100,000? Am I, am I hearing that right?
You're reading that right. But that's a typo. If you look at the 614, and you look below, it says the Martin Gardner paid to date 60,000. That was subtracted. That should not have been included in that. That has no variance on that 614 right now.
Okay.
That's above the line. So you take that number plus the 262, that more of a 351.
Still need 351?
If you read that the way that is written there, yes.
What can be gleaned out of it? How much money? I mean, to take, if we go back, obviously, you've been looking at it. You got some ideas. I know you've been talking to other contractors about this. I mean, do you lighten the steel? Do you get rid of the foam in the walls and go to standard insulation? Do you get rid of the metal studs in the walls? Do you get rid of huge ceiling fans?
Yeah. In 10 minutes' time, on my part, I cut over $12,000 without looking deeper. I know that's just a drop in the bucket.
But how does that, how does that now affect the bid letting? I mean, if, you know, if it's a refuse tonight, you know, in order to save more money, then you have to rebid the whole thing? And then what's that add for additional costs?
I don't think you can rebid the whole thing. You're taking on more expense. You'd be taking on more expense to rebid what you just bid. You can go and talk with the architect and look at different alternatives as far as materially that were spent.
So you're, what'd you say, 351?
If you do that math, yes.
And what's 389 before?
If we're, if we're putting the 60 back in, it should be 285, shouldn't it? How did it get to be 351?
The 60 shouldn't even, the 60's been paid by the city already. Expense is paid.
Right.
So we're not looking at that 60 right now. We're looking at the 615 is what we're talking about the bid. Correct? Oh, excuse me, 614, yes.
But what, but what you've got here so far, you still just, you need the 225, right?
So if you took the difference of that and that, is that?
Okay, whoops, sorry.
Sorry, no. That should not be there. That really has no play in what's happening right here.
Okay.
That was paid to date. That should be, you know what I mean? That's an additional what that is.
Dave, can you explain that to the whole group?
Oh, yes. So current to date, spent with Martin Gardner to do the plans and to meet with us and come here and talk at the city council, this cost probably $60,000, $60,500. That's what we, the city has already paid to do that work. So we're looking at an estimated cost now of $615,000. So that 60, in my opinion, right now, should not be included in that 614 for what we're looking at to date.
So you're saying 614 minus roughly 263 is 351?
Correct. Exactly. That's what I'm saying. Yes.
Construction has to start by when to get to $100,000 grant?
That has to be paid for. That, that money has to be spent by June. What's that?
July.
July 1st?
January 1st.
June 30th. Thank you. It's June 30th.
And we can ask for an extension on that grant, correct?
Yeah, it's not to completion, it's spent. So.
And there are their grant requests out that you have, there's from the other way it looks, Black Hills.
Correct.
And just to confirm too, Dave, everybody's held to the same standard, which would be the $614,000 is what, what it would be, no matter what, well, not necessarily that, but everyone's held to the big fans and everything else. So if the bid were to be accepted, it would be at 614. But knowing that there are cost savings involved, the idea would be that you would spend less than that because after seeing the specs and being able to thoroughly go through it, not just your part, but the electrical, potentially, the steel building, potentially, there are things that can be trimmed in order to meet a lower dollar amount.
Yeah, there is, you know, like the spec was for a cinder block wall for a two-hour fire barrier. There's other alternatives with a double wall and sheet rocking that you can do. Again, that's not, I don't understand that. I can't give you numbers because I don't do that part of my job. So I can't give you that. But there are cost saving ways we can look at, things like that. Yes.
Isn't that going to be up to the contractor? I mean, if he accepts, accepts the bid based off of what, doesn't he almost have to follow the architect plan?
If you work with the architect after the, if the bid is accepted or approved to move forward, you can work with the architect to get amended items that are at lesser costs or the same.
And this is from the architect?
This is from commercial knowledge of the past.
In order to do that, just.
Change orders.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be like an engineering change order on a, on a road where you're going to go from this much concrete to this much concrete. The engineer would bring it back to council, present it to council, and the council would approve yes or no on something like that. So the way I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but any changes that were made by any contractor that comes different from what was quoted, if they are awarded the bid, they can come back and say, well, I can save you $50,000 here. The architect comes back, says contractor A can save you $50 here. And this is after the, the bid's been awarded and the council would approve it. It wouldn't be like they're putting on four used tires and passing it off to you as a new car to save you $500. They're not, they can't do that without our knowledge or without the council's knowledge.
But we still don't know what that final figure's going to be.
Correct. Approximate.
You don't.
And I know you can't nail it down, but.
But that's where Dave's, Dave's saying, as a member of both the commission and one of the contractors, is that there's a lot of fluff in the bid that could be reduced to make that dollar amount that's needed, that $315, to reduce that down even farther, potentially. But it would have to come through. It'd be an engineering change order, no different than a road or any other project with the city. So that'd come through.
But there's also that fluff is built that where if they run into something else, they have it built up in there to take out of there.
I don't think they should run into anything unexpected, though, because this is pretty basic. You know, it's, it's a basic building. It's certainly been cut down to the bare bones. I mean, I sat in on the meetings too, and, and we made that clear to the architect that we don't want, you know, additional stuff on here. We just want the basic. I think he started out pretty high. He likes to spec things that are expensive, obviously.
$200 a square foot on a four-wall building with a sloped roof. Yeah, I mean, he's got some fluff built into it somewheres. So.
Well, but there's a lift in there. I mean, there's more than four walls, if my understanding is correct.
Right.
Can I add something? You don't have to. Don't sit down because I'm not a numbers person. But you mentioned the lift. I'm Ansel. I'm sorry. The lift is part of our, I mean, I know you've had questions about whether or not this building or this theater is even viable to proceed into the future. The lift is part of our vision and should be the community's vision on how to provide that income for the future. There are acts that we'd like to bring in. I'll just use this as an example. This last December, Lori Line played in the stage. She won't come to our theater anymore because we don't have a lift to bring her piano up. Let me finish. $36,000 was what they sold for that theater. Now that, we aren't making all that, but she's been here before. Those types of things are what we need that lift for. It's not for our theater to bring our speakers up on the stage. It's so that we have a viable business here on behalf of the city to bring money in to maintain ourselves.
I was in, I was saying, because Gary said it's four walls, and I said, no, there are many other things in it. I was not debating in any way the necessity of the lift.
Explain that to.
The lift is the most important part of it. We understand that already. That's got to stay.
The other thing is that I, I don't know if everybody's aware, but I, I personally, as part of our commission, have talked to many people who are more than willing to donate money for this. And we are severely handicapped by the fact that we don't have a go-ahead yet. They aren't going to do it until they know that it's got the city's approval. So I don't know how to, to ask anymore respectfully. But we're handicapped. And I see, just myself, a lot of money sitting there, you know, coming in until after this decision is made. So I just wanted to ask for, for vision for this historic building and for those that have had the vision before to help us continue. And I didn't mean it in person, but I was just going along that line. So, thank you.
Sure. Well, certainly that's why that building is there. I mean, when I moved to town 50 years ago, the theater was closed and it was just a wreck. George Champlin is the one that started that whole thing, you know, started fundraising. He had the vision to see that it could be a real asset to Cresco. And he pushed real hard. And you go over there, there's, and look on the wall, there's not five people or 10 people that donated. There's hundreds of people. And I think part of George's vision wasn't just watching movies. It was to make it a entertainment venue, that we'd have bands, concerts, or live entertainment, or plays, and movies. And certainly, that's what it's become. It's a big part of Cresco. It's a huge plus. People come here from long ways away, and they, they told me, the first thing they always say is, wow, this is really nice. They're impressed. But they always say, you know, I wish our town had the vision to do this. Because we used to have an opera house. We used to have a theater. Now they're all gone. They're demolished. Our county, our town is going backwards. Your town seems to be going forward. And I think this is a big part of that, about having the vision to go ahead, spend the money. I'm totally confident that they'll be able to raise money. And it'll go on for a long time. It's, I'm sure anybody that comes to town, that's the first thing, you know, show them the schools, and show them the fitness center, and show them the theater. It's that old thing, do we want to keep moving ahead or do we want to move backwards? So I think we just got to have the confidence that the money will come in and move ahead.
And I personally, I mean, I've been on both sides of this table. I've been asked, asking the council for money before. I've been helping and trying to work through this. The fact that in two weeks' time, and maybe that's, maybe that's an exaggeration, but $127,000 was pledged in two weeks' time, on top of planning shows, on top of planning everything else, shows what the cultural center for Cresco truly is for the people, not only in this room, but in the community. And even farther than that, our county and our corner of the state and the tri-state area, for that matter, because of what it brings in. It's truly phenomenal to see what we get during live performances here for license plates, because I'm kind of a nerd and like to, if I'm not there, I go by and see what's there. Because it, it really is amazing to see out of, out of county, out of state license plates and how far people come for these traveling groups. And just to Anne's, to further strengthen Anne's point, it really has become difficult to bring those acts in because of the size of the load-ins and things like that. And there's riders right on these, these contracts that state, if you don't have this, this, or this, we can't do it here. And we're at that point, which is unfortunate, because we've also handicapped, in essence, we've handicapped Wendy from making the potential money that the theater can make.
I went to that Looney, the Looney Luther's thing, and I was standing outside and a guy came up to me and said, I think I know you. And he, I haven't seen him for 55 years. But he drove over from Oshrim to attend the Looney Luther's. And he says, I've been here before. This is a great building and I love it. He's 90 some years old. And then he asked me, what's around town for restaurants? I said, I brought my family. We want to go eat. It's a pretty good testament.
You haven't changed in 50 years. What are you talking about?
I was amazed that he recognized. Seen at his house when I was in high school.
So my problem is that I agree with everything Anne and Dave and the commission and Stan have said. But the legislature has really handicapped us, the state legislature. They passed a law that said, in essence, there are like 12,000 pages, but, correct me if I'm wrong, the essence is, our property tax income can increase by no more than 3% per year. And yes, maybe it's a little less. And yes, maybe it's a little less, maybe it's zero. This year, this year, the valuations of the properties in Cresco increased by $3 million. Our property tax increase coming into the city was $25,000. That barely pays our... The increase in our alliance bill. And, yeah, I mean, basically, the problem is, okay, we can go up maybe zero, maybe 3% a year, but what we buy is just like your house, except we don't have to buy eggs. Police cars cost more, paper towels cost more, concrete costs more. Mathematically, we can be inspired, and I've taken people to the theater and said, "You have to see this." But mathematically, this only ends one way, and that's fewer services from the city. And Representative Bergen and Senator Clemish were here, and they pretty much admitted that, maybe not in so many words. This year, we told all the budgets... The department said they cut their budgets by 5%. We can do that a couple of years, and you know what happens, is maybe the library isn't open as many hours, maybe the parks get a little messy and don't get mowed, maybe the police don't patrol 24/7. But sooner or later, I mean, that's all just arranging deck chairs. Sooner or later, there's a very hard decision, and that means, I think, we're gonna have to choose between the fitness center and the theater. One of them is gonna have to go, because we just won't have the money. The other option, you can look at me, look at the legislature. The other option is, you know, the problem is, the theater, you're talking about raising money for the addition, which is a finite job. Right now, the theater, excluding any capital expenditures, like fixing the roof or anything like that, is taking about $50,000 to $60,000 of general fund money a year. The fitness center, and attendance is decreasing, which I admit is partly due to not having the lift and things. At the fitness center, memberships are increasing.
It's self-sufficient?
It's almost self-sufficient if you ignore capital expenditures. I don't... I won't be on the council, so I won't have to make that decision. But it doesn't make any sense to me unless people are prepared to commit to raising something on the order of $2 million, 1.5 million, whatever, to create a fund that the interest will support the theater. In effect, it turns into a private endowment for the theater. Obviously, that wouldn't happen immediately, but I think that's what it takes to keep the theater open. And I just... It pains me as much as anyone else, but there's only so much money, and the choice is, do you want to have other services, or do you want to have the theater?
The only good part of that, and it's hard to see any sunshine and...
Yeah, I'm the sun... I'm the little sunshine lady.
But the only good part of that is, we actively know it. We know it is a potential, it's a possibility, and at this point in time, the group that's dead... Not, and I shouldn't say "the group," because it's not just this group. It's everyone that uses the theater for something. And I don't think that the community understands how the city is funded, how the tax dollars are coming back to the city. The only sunshine in all of this is, right now, we can get ahead of it, we can communicate it, and if the citizens of our community and outside of our community know it, then you can start to work towards that endowment fund. You can start to try to push that forward and to move forward, because I know at our first meeting, when we had discussed this, it took everyone by surprise at the first discussion of the scene shop. Then I went to the commission meeting to try to help explain some of this, and I didn't... Admittedly, I didn't get into the depth that you did, Amy, but everyone has questions about it, how it's going to work, how it will be funded, how it will go through. But I have to honestly believe, when I look at this, and again, two weeks' time, $127,000 was raised towards the scene shop. The community wants this. There's people outside of the community that want it, and I have to believe, if we get the message out there that this can potentially happen, the community will rally behind it. And maybe I'm wrong, and maybe it's, you know, all clouds and sunshine, but I really truly believe that every person that's sitting here for the commission and for CCT and that just believes in it will rally behind it. I could be completely wrong and just off-base, but...
Well, and that would be the best outcome, but people have to understand that the problem is significantly bigger than the scene shop.
Oh, it's huge across the state, and...
Yeah.
The worst part is, is it's affecting large cities.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we're affected by the same amount as a large city.
The problem with the... Of course, if you're Des Moines, you're working with a little more money, so you can kind of move a little money around this year and then this year, but...
But I...
Unless Nikki has a secret pot.
I truly believe that everybody in this room wants to see not only this happen, but wants to see the theater continue, and... Hi, Kelly.
Hi. I just want to add something. I understand where you're coming from on all this, but I'm a big believer in the fact that what you're saying is correct. You're saying the "what if this is gonna happen," and I know it is... I know essentially what you're saying is going to happen, but you're not giving us or the community or anybody the benefit of the doubt in knowing how to get out there and help that situation, because I personally, after we heard about it two months ago or whatever it was, had already opened people's eyes to this kind of thing happening. And it wasn't just that they didn't want the theater closed, they don't want the fitness center to close, they don't want the library to close. So, while I can understand why you want to get that point out, and it makes complete sense to me, I also don't think that it should hinder, because you're not gonna be able to do it. And you just... You don't know. We've already done so much in such a little amount of time, and there are so many people, like Ann said, out there that want to help. I can't imagine that if they found out that this could happen, that they're not gonna want to save it, because it may not be a popular opinion in here, but this place is huge. Like, they love... People love it, and not just here. So, I'm having a really hard time with the fact that that is always... That's twice now where this is going without a, "Okay, here it is, but I'm really hoping you can do this. We're gonna get there. We're gonna do this." It's just... This... That's frustrating, because that's in the future, and we don't even... Right now, you're not... You're telling us, basically, in my mind, we're getting a, "You're not gonna be able to do this, so we're gonna close it." That's not how that should be addressed.
And may I add something also? I know we've talked about the importance of the lift, and if we do get the lift put in and the scene shop completed, the potential to raise income and for the theater to be self-sufficient and a money-making institution, we feel that the possibilities will be there. We think that this is truthful, that it could happen, that we could get lots of acts in there and generate income for the city and the theater. We have to have that go-ahead from you first, before we can make any of this reality, and we're asking for that trust and that vote. Thank you.
I think Cresco's always been real positive and moves ahead. Just drive around the state, and there's an awful lot of towns that didn't have a very positive attitude, and they don't approve stuff like this. "Oh, you know, I don't think we can risk this." And then they just go backwards and downhill, and I think if we're gonna continue to expand the town, have a nice town, I think this is a project we need to do. So, I'll make a motion that we... I guess it's adopt the plans and specifications? Is that the next thing we need to do?
Yeah, before we make a motion, you're still working on the fundraising, and I know it's difficult to back into a corner. The fundraising's gonna go on for years, is what you're telling us? I mean, in order to get to that point...
We did $77,000... It was $77,000 for the marquee, and it was above that because we found some structure, if I remember correctly. I don't have the numbers in front of me, not to interject, but we did $77,000, and I think it took, was it three years, maybe, to fundraise? The marquee paid for itself in electricity, and it was either 12 or 15 years, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it was a drastic reduction in energy. So, not only did CCT and the Theater Commission fundraise that $77,000, they also offset the cost of the electricity by going from neon to LED, and that helped. In essence, it helped pay for it, but that wasn't a part of that fundraised amount.
We were in this situation with the projector. I remember what year it was.
2009.
Thank you. We ran a 1954 lawnmower parts recovery projector going. There was no repair, so we had to do something. So, we came up with the Yelbrick Road fundraiser. We did what we wanted to get to. We strove... We strived to get further, and Kansas City Council told, "Go do it." They didn't want to help you, because I was here. So, Jim and Marla Johnson, my wife and I, went out in four months, raised $87,000. Put cans out, going door-to-door, sit on fair. This is doable. We saved it then. Nine... That's how many years ago? I mean, costs were way less expensive then. It's just, yeah. Pretty quiet, but I can get pretty emotional, get loud, choose it not to, so compassion about theater grew up there. My kids grew up there. I do perform up there. There's nothing better than performing on a theater. The sad thing about our theater, the worst part of our theater, it's an ugly brick building that faces heavily night. Besides the sign that says Cresco Theater, you don't know how beautiful that building is until you go up there.
So, it's gorgeous buildings, no doubt.
And everybody comes in and is just like, "Oh." So, I'm doing theater decor now across my friends overseas, and they want a theater on that stage. So, it's... Yeah. It's important.
Before any motion or anything's made, we've got three other individuals in the crowd that... Joe Waka's been here. I know Jim and Bart Bolstrom are big supporters of the theater as well. Do you have anything you'd like to say and/or bring up to the council?
Bart Bolstrom, want to wait for a film? That's where I live. The theater is here. It's a way that we convert culture. That's culture to Cresco. That's something that is needed in any town, and that's an opportunity to promote that. The opportunity is to have the other artists that Richard and everybody's talked about, and I get that. I came to Cresco when George Champlin came here. 400 seats were... Our forefathers, our city's forefathers bought that building. That would be Jack Thompson, George Champlin, and Jerry Weisberg, president of this bank. They all went together, they bought that building, and then they started raising money, and we all got in it. I was in the basement of that theater hauling stuff out. We would come out of that basement black, because they've been... It had been just a disaster. That thing started, we got it done. I was very... My pictures, and a couple of the pictures of the plays, in fact, I was in every play, and it probably is one thing that kept me in Cresco. That's... That was part of it, camaraderie and the fun, but it's also culture. We need to make sure, and the city has been very, very strong with that. We could have had a library that wasn't a Carnegie library. The city council stepped up. It says, "We need to keep a Carnegie library." That library was gonna be changed, and it was gonna go to where the Dollar Store was, Brewery. Now, that could have been the library. The city council stepped up, and they went in and they says, "Yes, no, we need these buildings." 1914, a group of people met in the armory, which is where our garage, where the Borlaug is, group of people met in that armory, they decided to build that theater and did it. I mean, and it is... It's a piece of history that we need to keep in Cresco, and we cannot, absolutely cannot lose that. And you guys are supporting super, super things, just like you said, but we need to continue to support them. If you need more money, we can find it. That's one thing Cresco and George Champlin, I give him credit. That's when this town started to step up the plate and people donated. If we need money for the fitness center, if the city is running low on money, we can find it. We find it for the police department. We find it, the police department gives money for the dogs and the sheriff's. Everybody, I think this... I feel very strongly that this is a very, very good thing, and we don't want to lose that theater, because it is... It's part of culture, and we all need that. Everybody needs that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Anyone else have anything that they'd like to contribute?
I would like to say something. I am not a part of this whatsoever. I'm here for a totally different reason. I'm pageboard vault, for anyone who doesn't know. I didn't come in here supporting the theater or having anything to do with it, but I'm gonna be leaving, supporting it. As a young person, not to throw that out there, but my fiancé and I are the youngest in the room here, obviously. It was not my intention to move back to Cresco, but these services and these things are the reason I'm inspired to be here and be a part of it and to establish my business here, and I would hate to see it go. I would hate to see the fitness center go. All these things are the arts, the culture, exactly like you said. They're the things that I'm a part of and that strive for my business especially. Those are the things that create the community. I think it's really important. To note about the Lori Langley thing, I had no idea. I saw her at the Cresco State Theater for the first time way back when, but I didn't know that was the reason she never came back. I've been going up to Burnsville to see her in Minnesota for many years, but I would love to have her come back, because, I mean, she's a staple for me, and I had no idea that that was the reason she wasn't coming. Also to note, my best friend is from France, and the theater is the absolute best thing she comes to see here. She loves going in it. We saw a performance, Donovan performed one year many years back, and we came to watch him perform, and she visited this fall, and she loved to go and see it. We toured, we didn't get to watch anything, but it's her favorite thing, and to hear that you have people from France, born and raised in France, who love the theater, I think that's a special thing as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, stand. Did you make the resolution?
Yes, I did. I made that motion.
And I'm seconding it.
Is there any other discussion that needs to be had, or...
We're at, what'd you say the number was, 315?
351.
351.
You continue to fundraise, keep biting that. How long is it gonna take? He don't know, but, well, I mean, we got some idea.
Like I said, it took three years for the last one. We did it in eight months for $80,000. That was a lot smaller. Perfect road, like I say, a year.
Okay.
It falls on our shoulders. That's what it falls on.
Well, I'll tell you what, Dave. You got my vote, if you can hold to that. You understand the situation we're in, too. We just sat here, went through budgets, and we cut.
100%.
Try to stay where the city's flushing.
Which falls on us as a commission now to look at outside-the-box ways to generate money, and we've talked about it in the document already. So, we are already trying to be proactive about something we can do with the theater to make it easier for you guys.
Yeah, because you're gonna have to.
Because I think you really need to think of getting to the theater as self-supporting, with the possible exception of some help, you know, with the roof or capital projects.
And I get that, and Amy, you know as well as I do, we've trimmed the fat from the bottom dollar? We're there. Just maintain it, make sure it's working well. That's the best part at this point. So we have to look at alternative ways for other stuff.
Structurally, how solid is that building, David?
It's amazing.
Roof good?
Built in one year to the day of start, yes, roof's good.
What's a life expectancy, something like that, for your business standpoint?
That roof, Moss Roofings, right?
Yes.
Shrikers? And they did that, how many years ago? I'm sorry.
Well, before mine's there.
Well, before it happened. They go up there every year. That's a question for them, I can't answer that. I don't know.
I think it's on the CIT, but I don't remember.
But it's probably a fifteen, twenty-year roof yet that.
I think it is on there, twelve years.
Twelve years.
That's a thirty-year roof. That's what our buildings are, thirty-year roofs.
And then every ten years waterproof the upper part of the brick, because it's Cresco brick, and it'll absorb water and allow the inside to pop again, but we know that now. We learned that back during the renovation a few years ago.
That, and that, another conversation under time isn't one of the reasons I don't want to have an outside access to that roof through that brick. There's alternative ways that we can discuss at a later date, that are way more feasible and not a lot less expensive.
So if we okay this tonight, and it goes forward, and we make these cuts with the contractor coming in and do these changes, who's going to ramrod that? Who's going to be the guy that's, or the lady that's thumbing down on that?
It's going to have to be me.
Finding every place we can do that.
It's going to have to be me.
Okay.
The only thing now, too, Dave, is if we move ahead with this, I mean, the next thing you know, going around with seats and all that stuff. You have to hold off on that for a little bit.
Well, in a perfect world, Rich, we raise above and beyond what we need.
Okay.
Towards that. That's what we did with the projector. We raised above and beyond, took that money extra, and we had that labeled just for theater use only, so.
The remodel of the interior of the lobby, back when the city took it over, the excess funds from the projector balance helped pay for all that new paint and everything inside that inner, the lobby and then the atrium in between, that was all paid for through that fund that Jim, Marla Johnson, Dave and Danielle Gosh had helped raise, so.
I think there's a theater trust, right?
That's when the theater trust started. But, well, I just want to thank everybody who came here tonight in support of it, even Paige, she brought up Donovan Gosh, so I won't fault her for that entirely, but I do, I do personally appreciate it. I know the council appreciates the show of support. We have a first and a second roll call.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
I don't think the city can afford this, but I'm going to give you the vote of confidence. But I think it's going to be your problem soon. Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you all. So, item number two, resolution ad hoc.
We just did that.
Oh, well, you know. I just wanted to do it one more time.
I was so enthusiastic. So enthusiastic.
Item number three, resolution making award of construction contract for the Cresco Theater and Opera House Scene Shop.
So this is where we need to take the lowest bid, correct?
Yes, you're required to take the lowest responsible bid.
So that looks like it's Dave's complete construction, and I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Item number four, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign a right of entry for construction for the scene shop project with MB Inc.
So moved.
And this was just for the first year? It would be revisited in the second year if needed?
Yes, it would be through the end of December of 2025, and then we'd reevaluate it depending on how far they're in the project.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Item number five, resolution approving loan agreement for loan of funds from CUSB Historic Downtown Revolving Loan Fund in the City of Cresco to Ethan Govern and Paige Bordwell DBA, Paige Bordwell Alterations.
Make the motion.
Yeah, we should give them a chance to talk.
Give them a second, because this is a fun one, now that you got through all that.
This is an easy one.
Around the good side. You don't need to be introduced to Paige anymore, because she's already come up here. So you already understand who we're dealing with. And Ethan is here with her. So we're just really excited to be able to use this fund again through you guys as a fiscal agent. I think when we check, even if we approve this tonight, we'll still have another fifty K left in there. So we'll have availability to do another project, but you guys go ahead and talk about your co-projects.
Yeah. So, as you know, I'm Paige. I opened up Paige Bordwell Alterations, and for the past year and a half, I've been renting. This building came about, the Legacy Gem, if you aren't familiar with it. And we decided to buy it. It has great potential for my business. It'll triple my space, triple my opportunity for expansion, all of that. So I do, for those of you who don't know, I do regular alterations, repair work, bridal alterations is kind of my specialty. I also do drapery and interior soft goods as well, which this space will allow me to expand into that. But mainly, we'll be using this loan for the renovations of the upstairs to turn it into a one-bedroom apartment that we're going to be living in for the time being. Hopefully, eventually, it'll be rental income for us when we decide to leave, but that's many years down the road. But yeah, any questions?
I have to say, I was part of the meeting, the meeting before this, that voted to go ahead with your application. And I was really impressed by everything you've done, and frankly, the fact that you're twenty-three and applying for not that much of a loan. And let me tell you, we need alterations. I think that the person that I've been going to is kind of, maybe not, well, you said you went to everyone who provides it, and they're like so grateful that you're getting into it.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't have your clothes altered, you don't know what an issue it is to have somebody who does it. So I'm going to make the motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yeah.
Kreener?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Item number seven, discuss request and planning in the zoning commission recommendation
to vacate undeveloped portion of F Street.
Tractors are here tonight. I think you, Gary, you talked to ferries, and they were not going to be here tonight. I know last time, there was some question about some trees on ferry side of it. In the past, the city, I know, when we vacated F, or not F Street, the street up the street, the last street we vacated, there were some trees left, and the homeowners had to take those down. You know, the trees that are left here, I guess, you know, I think the homeowners should be responsible for them. They're getting the land. Basically, we're giving them the land. That's kind of how it's been done. If there was any expense with vacating a street, the people that receive the property in the past typically pay for the expense. And I think this time, outside of the trees, I estimate roughly three thousand dollars to have fifteen hundred to have it surveyed, and roughly fifteen hundred in legal and associated fees. So that would be split up amongst, looks like, three property owners. And.
Do we have, because the bike trail goes right through. Do we have any issue with the easement, or, I mean, how, I guess the general question is, how is the bike trail in this?
We would separate, that would stay our property, so that would, when, that's what would require the survey. So we will section the bike trail off.
Above, so outside of F Street?
Yes.
Is it our property, or is there an easement?
Above and below it, it's our property.
Okay, I just, okay.
And that process on your property? The bike trail?
Goes through the back of our property.
I don't know that it was originally our property back there, with the ferries. I'm not sure that was all.
I don't know when that bike trail was put in. Was it put in, like, in oh-six or before?
But it was done, it was done, there was originally a fence, you know, that got taken out when all the tree line got taken out here recently. And it was on the opposite side of the, so I don't believe that was our property in that in time anyway.
Right.
So it'd be set up that all the cost, the city occurs no cost in this, going forward?
Right.
You guys are all good with that?
Yeah, we plan on taking the trees out that are in that area we're wanting to get.
I know Gary's been good to work with on it, too, and I think Lois, you guys have probably been dealing with her.
Yeah, we've talked to them.
Yeah, everything's good. Yeah, my son's good, so.
I don't foresee that ever being a street anytime soon, if ever, you know, so.
Like I said, we don't plan on selling the property to have somebody coming and develop down there.
Right.
When the ferries called me one night, Nick, their son, was on the phone, and he said that they didn't, that mom and dad didn't plan on doing anything like selling it to develop it, and none of the kids did, so.
You know, they'd have to be developed or responsible for putting the road in and bringing it up in sewer and water.
Yeah, there's no sewer ran down there. You'd have to, well, like, assisted living, they have a lift pump for their sewer.
Right. Right.
As long as the city's got no cost involved, I'll make the motion and go forward with it, and you're going to head up getting it?
Yeah, and, you know, the surveying, I guess I haven't talked with Lois. I'm assuming she wants her half of the roadway that amounts to her property.
And actually, Matt Brister's son, I've talked to him, and so Lois might even Matt to help explain.
Yeah, yeah, so I can reach out to Matt, but, yeah.
You have a motion, second.
Roll call.
That they would remove their own trees, basically.
Yes. The city bears no responsibility after this point.
Yeah.
Alls we did was give, we gave it.
Yes.
Roll call.
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Item number eight, set public hearing for vacating F Street.
So as long as we have everything ready, we can do that on March seventeenth.
Who's St. Patrick's Day?
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Item number nine, set public hearing for proposed property tax levy for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
And that is that special meeting that's required by the state now. There has to be a separate meeting, standalone, nothing else can be discussed. So that'll be April seventh.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, motion.
Second. Roll.
And that's at what time?
It would be right before the meeting. I'll double check. I think you're only required to have fifteen minutes.
Okay.
So either five or five fifteen, but I'll figure it out.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Roll call.
McConnell?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Item number ten, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign twenty twenty-five Iowa Regional Housing Trust Fund pledge form.
And this is just a pledge form that they sent, so that's, I think it was twelve thousand five hundred, that's in the budget for next year.
So moved.
Second. I think these people do fantastic work.
Did you want to say something?
I do, because I want you to go ahead and do that. But I told Chris one afternoon this afternoon, Upper Explorer Land just got awarded a lot more money to do another housing rehab grant, and he goes, I need it moved ASAP. So I'm saying this now, so that it gets out on there, and that you guys all help find some more applicants, not for the eight to ten thousand dollar projects we do here with this kind of money, for projects that could go up to thirty-five thousand dollars. So like, people that would qualify, low to moderate income, that need some serious work done, and can be across the board. We have done those before, and he just called, he goes, I got to do this fast, I need as much help as I can. I said, I'm going to city council tonight, how's that work? He goes, great.
An individual applicant can get up to thirty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And that can include roofs, and windows, and doors, and water heater, and furnace.
Siding windows?
Yep. You got to qualify, right? It's got to be LMI, but, he said, we're, we've got it up here because we've proven that we can move that money, and they need the money moved, so.
That's through the state, not federal monies?
That was a, it was a federal home loan bank that put that out.
Okay.
We've gotten a word before where we had a finite number of, that we could fill, and we filled it, and then they came back to them. So if you know folks, now's the time.
Yeah. Do you have the parameters on the income, anywhere?
It's like eighty percent of that, the median family income, so.
It might be on the application and the entry, and there's a couple copies out there.
And they do put the hundred, the eighty, the sixty.
I think it might be on it, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So I've got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
Carson?
Yes.
All right, item number eleven, discuss parking ordinance.
We've been working on this for a little bit, we being, me and myself and the chief, and, you know, the council has been a little bit part of it, too. Amy pointed out a couple things today.
Perhaps purple doesn't apply.
Purple, we've got the word purple in there instead of purpose. Must be the chief's favorite color. Amy, do you want to bring up what you, what we talked about today at all first?
Well, so, I'm frustrated, because to me, this looks really piecemeal, and Dave and I talked about it, because, for instance, why do we have parking regulations under Section
So, I've got a motion and a second. Roll call.
Greener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Hassan?
Yes.
All right, item number eleven, discuss parking ordinance.
We've been working on this for a little bit, we being me and myself and the chief, and, you know, the council has been a little bit part of it, too. Amy pointed out a couple things today.
Perhaps purple doesn't apply.
Purple, we've got the word purple in there instead of purpose. Must be the chief's favorite color.
Amy, do you want to bring up what you, what we talked about today at all, first, or...
Well, so, I'm frustrated, because to me, this looks really piecemeal, and Dave and I talked about it, because, for instance, why do we have parking regulations under section eighty-one and under section sixty-nine, and we have to correct both of them? Why doesn't one reference the other to make this easier? And that, then I get even more frustrated, and I started thinking, well, there are a lot of things, it's just not clear to me, and so far, I've counted seventeen different types of vehicles in ten different locations, that we may or may not want those vehicles in. Those are the types of vehicles that are referenced somewhere in our ordinance, and it just seems to me we should be more methodical, and I know I'm not finished, I haven't read the whole thing yet. You know, let's sit down and decide, okay, for a road tractor, whatever that is, do we want that in, to be able to park in one of these ten areas, which are boulevard, private driveway, street, residential district, alley, highway, front yard, backyard, side yard, service station? It, it just seems to me we're doing this little piece by piece, and not putting it all together.
So, would your recommendation be tabling it till it's better?
Yes, that would be it.
Okay.
That's a long, thank you for the...
She's back there smiling away.
Yeah, we can table it.
So, one of the things that you had brought up, and, and it was chapter one is the RV ordinance, I believe.
Yeah.
And can we make, do we have to have anything about parking in the RV ordinance, or is it going to all be in this parking ordinance itself, right?
Yeah.
Is that, is it the RV and the semi included in that same conversation?
I mean, that...
Yeah, because it's, well, we're looking at potentially reading a proposed ordinance five eighteen and five nineteen, which is parking regulations and RV parking, or recreational parking regulations, so...
How do we simplify, let's get together and just throw it out and start over?
I mean, we...
I mean, I just don't want to go pass and stuff, make them logs, and they can't enforce, they're running around trying to do stuff, and getting the residents all lather.
Unless it's Sam that's doing it, then I'm okay with it.
So, one of, one of the, one of the goals was to not have any trailers, campers, trucks, big trucks, in the streets, parking.
Okay.
Do you all agree on that?
Yes.
Semi-traffic parking in some of these side streets is ridiculous.
So, that, to me, that's part of, that's probably the meat of it.
But, for instance, does the semi include the full semi, the semi cab only, the semi the trailer only, which are actually referenced in separate places in the ordinance?
Well, I reference the semi, I represent the cab and the trailer.
Yeah.
So, I mean, yeah, the...
But, but we need to straighten that up.
Right.
So, we want to table five eighteen and five nineteen and combine them?
And I think it'd be separate items yet, but it would, we would clarify what Amy is saying, where there's so many references in so many place, condense it down so it's listed here or there, not both places with verbiage that potentially contradicts each other and makes Tim go cross-eyed.
Okay.
Sounds like reading the Iowa code book.
Yeah.
You take it all on just one vehicle.
Right.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it might be that simple, yeah, maybe.
So, by saying vehicle, you're saying no cars can park on the street? I mean, to me, a vehicle is any vehicle, any smart vehicle, any truck.
I guess that, no, we won't want to go with that drastic, but there's got to be better clarification on some of the bigger stuff.
Yeah.
It's got to come from these guys, so...
All right, we'll work on that? Okay.
Do we need a motion to table it, or, okay. All right.
Now the yard waste site.
Fourteen, well, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, but, then that takes us to discuss the yard waste site.
Jeez, I can hardly hold my excitement in.
So, we had a public works meeting last week and, and talked through some ideas, and, and right now, the yard waste is still closed, we do have a key here, people have been calling in and asking if they can come in, and, and we've been checking the key out, and, and we have, I think we went and made some more keys, we have three keys right now. Still doesn't prevent...
You just want to deposit on those keys?
Ten bucks. Still doesn't prevent people from doing stuff, they're not supposed to, we found out today.
And the ten dollars is only so we get the key back, we're not keeping any of it, literally, it's just so we get the key back.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the ones that come and get the key are doing...
Mm-hmm.
What did they dispose of?
Ashes and boards.
Oh.
Ashes still?
Yep, yep.
But with, that way, we know who's out there, though.
Yep, yep, and caught them early enough, and, and Officer Sam came out, and, and we talked with the gentleman, we gave him a shovel, he scooped the ashes back up, and took his boards and went home.
In here in town?
Yep, yep. I, I don't see how we can keep doing what we've been doing, we're going to wind up with a great big yard waste full of chips if we do that. There's several yard waste sites out there that don't accept big trees, big trunks, of course, the question is, where do they go then?
And, and just to be clear, we're some of the people that dispose of big trees?
We are, yep, yep, we've, we've got our own trees, too, and, yep. So, I guess that's, the, I, right now, we're checking the key out. I know in the past, when the yard waste opened, in the early, I think it was nineteen ninety, it opened because the art, the landfills would not accept yard waste anymore.
Right.
So, we opened up the land, the yard waste site here. Rod Friedhoff was in last Thursday, he told me that's why he got hired to the city for the street department, apparently it was because of the yard waste site, he didn't, he wasn't hired to replace anybody, nobody retired, nobody quit, nobody was fired, they just hired him because they were taking on the yard waste site. Back then, they picked up, I think, almost every Monday, and the yard waste site was open Saturdays from eight to two or eight to four, with a guard out there, checking people in and out.
This, this Saturday?
I think that's something we need to seriously consider. You know, we can, right now, we're going to pick up half a dozen times this year, maybe is it eight, I think, four in the spring, four in the fall? Nikki has it there.
Yeah.
We can, we can certainly look at bumping that up, especially in the spring and fall, or maybe doing it every other week, something like that.
What did we figure that one day we were talking in there about, firing somebody? What did we...
We figured, and I think we had more than one day there, but, you know, right now, we pay our summer help, I believe it's fifteen dollars an hour, Nikki, does that sound right?
Yeah.
So, if it's open six hours on a Saturday, that's...
Nine.
Yep, and what did we say? We come up with four, forty-five hundred bucks, something like that, that we would spend on somebody monitoring it.
That's one day a week?
Yep, Saturdays.
I, I don't think that that one day a week is going to be enough, because there's, you got all these lawn care services in town that mow and bag and rake, and...
Right.
They're not going to sit on that stuff for a week.
Can they check out a key, though?
That, that could be an option, too, or we, I believe that's what Decor has done in the past, is it's open on Saturdays, but then you can come and check out a key when, when city hall is open. So, that's certainly an option. I'm not opposed to trying anything, I just, I just believe we have to do something different.
You're thinking with the lawn care operation, because you...
Well, same with the, same with like the tree trimmers.
Yeah, but I don't want to be the same thing now, if we offer a key and they still go out there with ashes, somebody does.
Right, and that's just, I mean, we'll have a better, maybe a better handle on who is dumping those ashes. I know Lonnie was out there today, a branch blew down on one of our own trees, and so